Okay, I am going to call this meeting to order tonight on January 26th. That's Monday, January 26th, 2015. On our agenda tonight is the approval of the agenda. We do have open forum, superintendent's report, then we have four discussion items. The school board listening sessions, our school calendar discussion on the calendar for next year, 2015-16, and the proposed ownership transfer of the WMEP Fair Schools, and a strategic plan discussion. We'll follow that with a consent agenda. And then on the action agenda is approval of the 2015-16 school calendar, and approval of an appointment to the City of St. Louis Park Parks and Recreation Commission, followed by communications and transmittals. Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor of the motion, please say aye. Aye. Anybody opposed? All right, motion carries. We have our agenda for the evening. The first thing on the agenda is our open forum where we invite members of the public to come address the school board in three-minute presentations. And I have one slip for open forum from Mike Beer. If you would come to the microphone and introduce yourself and tell us why you're here tonight.
Mike Beer, 7224 Dupont Avenue North, Brooklyn Center. Master Sergeant Beer of the 934th Security Forces Squadron. And for the school district, I am also known as "That Computer Guy." I think his name was Mike. Tonight, I have two presentations for my boss, Tom Marble. Tom? First one is a letter of appreciation. This letter is to show gratitude to Tom Marble, Director of the Information Services Department at School District 283. During the past 11 years, he has been nothing short of supportive and accommodating with Master Sergeant Michael Beer's Reserve career at the 934th Security Forces Squadron. This has included a deployment to Iraq in support of Operation Enduring Freedom, annual tour training requirements, and countless short-notice special assignments. Mr. Marble has been able to successfully balance the schedules of his employees during these times while making sure the needs of staff and students of the St. Louis Park School District are met as well. Mr. Marble's efforts are greatly appreciated and help enhance the effectiveness of the 934th Security Forces Squadron. That is signed by my operations officer, Major Judson Sutrowski. That includes an endorsement that says, "I would also like to take this opportunity to offer my own personal thank you for affording Master Sergeant Beer the time he requires to meet his Air Force commitments. I wish all employers were as understanding as you." And that is signed by Colonel, or excuse me, Major, he's not Colonel yet, Gregory Peterson, Commander of the Security Forces Squadron. The second one that I have, and final one, is from the Office of the Secretary of Defense. Employer Support of the Garden Reserve recognizes Tom Marble, St. Louis Park's Public Schools, as a patriotic employer for contributing to national security and protecting liberty and freedom by supporting employee participation in America's National Guard and Reserve Force. That is signed by the Executive Director and National Chair of the Employer Support of the Garden Reserve. That one comes with a little lapel pin, but you've got a little catching up to do.
Oh, yeah, sure.
Thank you.
Well, thank you. That's a wonderful recognition of Tom, who did not know this was happening tonight. Rob finagled to get him here. So, thank you, Mike Beer. Thank you for recognizing him. Wonderful way to start the evening. And Tom, you may stay for the evening, or he may go home, right?
He can go home.
Yes. Whatever line he told you, it wasn't true, I guess. All right, then stay. I did send you an email about software for apps for the iPads. We'll move on to the superintendent's report. Superintendent Metz.
Thank you. This is paraprofessional week, as declared by Governor Dayton, so I'd like to take just a minute to thank our wonderful paraprofessionals who work in our school district. Typically, you will see them in the lunchroom, on the playground, working with students who need a little extra helping hand. They have very close contact with our students and have a very big impact on our students. And I would even call them the unsung heroes of the school system. So, it's fantastic that Governor Dayton sets aside this time to recognize and honor the paraprofessionals of St. Louis Park and all the districts in Minnesota. So, congratulations to them, and thank you to all of them.
Well, thank you. They certainly are essential to running our schools and variety of programs, so we appreciate every single one of our paras who are active in our classrooms and know our kids oh so well. The first discussion item is school board listening sessions. And this is on, I think all of us now have been on the school board long enough to know that, and for a number of years, we've had several sessions that, we've called them listening sessions, but basically an opportunity for more informal connections with members of our community who might have something they want to raise and may or may not want to come stand at a microphone in front of it, in front of the cameras, or not happen to run into us at one of the, you know, wherever we are across the community. We should remind people there are email opportunities and our hotline, the phone number for the school board. But we've talked, we've done that most years, realized we haven't done any yet this year, so I am throwing that out to the board. Do we want to try and schedule maybe two for the remainder of the year? Get a couple of us at each one of those, and see who comes? So, that's what I'm thinking. What do you folks think? I saw a thumbs up from Karen. Jim's nodding. Any, everybody thinks that's, so why don't we set two dates? I'll work with Linda and/or Cindy, I don't know how you guys are dividing things up, but maybe February and April sound right? So, we can do the February one. It'll be after the, I think our next meeting is the ninth, I may be wrong, but it is? Okay. It'll be after our next board meeting, so we can announce it at least at that meeting. We'll get a couple of dates. We'll send them out to you and wait for two to three people. We do, we do not allow a quorum, so that's four of us. It'll be under, it'll be three or two people. And we'll pick a couple of locations around town. Is there any thoughts about best places to hold the listening sessions? We've been all over the place, so, you know, there's really quite a variety, but thoughts?
Have we used the community room at the public library in recent years?
No, and that's a nice, that's a good idea. Okay. Now that it's all nicely redone. Okay, we'll get those dates. Yeah, Jim?
Maybe, then for the next one, maybe at one of our remodeled buildings, we could use one of the classrooms after.
I think that might be one of the issues, people. Can I, I already threw my pen where I can't reach it, so let me do, that's two pens I've lost since I walked in here at 5:30. Yeah, maybe Aquila in the library, so we get kind of up, well, they're both on sort of the same side of town. Anyways, we'll do two, we'll do February and April, and we'll get them scheduled on the website, and we'll be able to talk about them at the February 9th board meeting. Okay, I knew that would be a short one. The next item on the agenda is the school calendar discussion. And our Director of Human Resources, Rick Cryer, is going to talk about the school calendar and board members. If your eyes, like mine, couldn't quite read it on the iPad, there's a legible-sized one here. There is a way to turn it, yes. I studied my iPad technology yesterday. You can turn it, well, just turn your machine, but then you can scrape, you can swipe this thing up, and there's a symbol that's a lock with a circle around it that will lock it in position, and then you can actually look at it that way. There's a swipe from the bottom. I can show you afterwards. I feel very master.
So, 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 so.
Time to get the calendar up there.
Calendar's up there.
Just not in focus, really.
Calendar's out of focus, as it has been through much of this process.
Well, bring some clarity, then, please. Oh, there you got it.
I have it bigger, I'm not sure if it's clearer. All right, they didn't, they didn't send me through the little school. Is that better? I hope, okay.
Madam Chair, Superintendent Members of the Board, thank you. So, we are bringing you today a recommendation for the 15-16 school calendar. I know that in the past, traditionally, or many times, the board has been asked to look at a two-year calendar. Specifically, we're doing the first of the two years tonight. The district is still pursuing a possible option of starting before Labor Day in the second year, which would be 16-17. And instead of approving both calendars tonight and then changing, we felt it would be best to secure whether or not we could proceed with the option to start before Labor Day, and then bring you, bring that back to the board at a later meeting this spring, but definitely before school's out. The earlier we know, the better. This will also give us some time to do some listening sessions with staff, parents, and other community members and students, and see if that makes it a better calendar, or, yeah, because we have some ideas why it could be better to start before Labor Day and get out earlier in June. Okay, so, once again, you have seen a version, a very similar version of this calendar, if not this exact calendar, earlier in December. We did meet with additional stakeholders, staff members, I know we met with D-PAC, we met with student groups, the superintendent did. And what we're bringing you, again, is a somewhat of a rollover calendar from last year. We would start after Labor Day. The kindergarten groups would start two days after that Tuesday following Labor Day. And primarily, one of the few things we did was to move some of the professional development days that we had this year around to help maximize the number of five-day school weeks, or at least four-day school weeks wherever possible. And under some of the options that we had in our last calendar for this year even, we found that we had more weeks that were chopped up, and if we optimized that a little bit, we could have more continuous weeks. The one other thing we did is we worked very hard so that students would not have to come back the June 13th Monday, so they wouldn't have to wrap over and come back one extra day on Monday to get our year in. And we did that by working with the PAT group and moving a day that we had for kind of a workshop or grading compensatory day, and we moved that to October 16th, which is part of the MEA workshop day, but it's also not a teacher work day here. So, if we, in essence, pay them for that Friday to make up for the grading and reporting they did, and the conferences they did at an earlier time, then we meet the obligations in the contract, and we don't cut into any student learning time. So, any questions within?
Questions?
I just have a statement. I like that you were able to make that work so that they don't have to come back on a Monday. That's really taxing on families, so thank you.
Nancy?
Yeah, Rick, I think that's also a great outcome. I'm still, and I know you've done a lot of work and talked to a lot of people, and this may be what we have, but I'm still unhappy that we have to go all the way into the, through the second week in June because of the late Labor Day start. Can I, so I just have a couple of questions. The early release days on October 14th and May 27th, they're not listed in the law as professional development days, so I'm wondering why, if they are and it's just not noted, or why we're having early release days, those two days?
They're, I'm sorry, they're not listed in the, did you say law or log?
Log, the color-coded, at least, I just see early release, no school PM, but it doesn't tell me why.
Oh, I'm sorry. Oh, that is, those are early release days for professional development. In the, in the color coding, and I mentioned this last time, and I just forgot to mention it again this time, we, in the past, the calendars that we've produced like this with colors, there was a lot of colors, but in this time, we tried to take some action to create some order to the coloring. So, if it's more bluish, it has to do with professional development. If it's green, it has something to do with a holiday or a time off. The yellow days mark the end of the quarters and semesters. The, I would say beige-ish, or brownish, or orangish, depending upon your color palette and printer, would have to do with conference compensation days or evening work the teachers did where they then would have some alternative day off, or after, usually you'll see one after a semester break, there'll be a day for grading and reporting. So, those are, those days. The hashed marks, if it has a hash line through it, typically no students would get on a bus and come to school that day. So, that's a little bit, little bit of order to some of the, some of the colors.
Go on.
Yeah, I just, I just had a couple more. I was noticing that you got some feedback, and there's some of that here on our desk, and apparently somebody wondered about bank holidays and the President's Day and Martin Luther King Day. And I know those are legally mandated, and my one observation is part of the challenge we're having with, from my point of view, with the calendar and where I'd like to have more student days and get out earlier, is that the legislature, it's mandated we start after Labor Day, even when Labor Day falls late, and it's mandated those two holidays and doesn't give us any discretion. We have discretion over a holiday in October, but not over those two, and I think, I would love to see some changes at the legislative level that would give us a little more flexibility. I wondered about, because we're starting a week later due to Labor Day, I'd like to hear more about why we cannot, the pros and cons, or what you discovered and who you talked to about reducing that two-week winter break. It seemed to me if we could take two days, out of the, two or three days out of that winter break, we would get out of school two or three days earlier in June, or even move that December 4th Professional Development Day to the winter break day, so the kids have a day of school and we are a day shorter. I just wanted to hear more about the thought processes, because I think whatever fall is unfortunate this year.
Yeah, those were, those were, those were options that were discussed with various groups, and the superintendent can add additional comments. I remember him saying that the students universally opposed shortening spring break and winter break. Staff was, I don't want to say 100%, but there were, there was an overwhelming majority of staff who preferred to have the time off. We heard from our buildings and grounds people, and some of the safety and security people, and the principals, that especially this year with as much flu as we had, actually having the buildings open, no kids, no germs, and deep cleaned over the winter break is actually a good thing to get everyone kind of away from each other so they quit passing things around. So, there was a lot of, and then the D-PAC group and some of the other parent meetings, I would say it was about split down the middle. There were people who really liked having the winter break, and people who said, "Well, yeah, it's a long time, and it requires extra daycare, and, and, and." So, there were, I would say that split. When we bring you the next calendar, there probably will be an option to break up the winter break. And that's because another one of these federal holidays falls on a Jan., or, June, January 1st, New Year's Day, falls on a Sunday. And when it falls on a Sunday, then Monday is the next day off. So, we're forced to either look at, we don't want to just take one day off of the beginning of the break, or, you know, go to school one day on the Monday and then have 10 days off. And if we wanted to have a two-week solid block, we would then also have to have Mondays, now we would have an 11-day off. So, we're looking at, how many days do we take, three days out of the first week, and then have one day January 2nd, that where we go to school? And then that would allow us to get out possibly as early as that first Friday in June, which I think is June 2nd. So, there's kind of a lot of moving parts that we'll bring back, and changing the winter break would be one of those.
And Rick, I understand that's the next year's calendar. On this one, what was the split amongst the teachers about shortening the winter break? Do you have some rough statistics? I'd be curious.
Without, without statistical precision, I would say 98% to two, roughly, give or take, give or take plus or minus three.
Well, remind them of that in June.
Yeah, we've done surveys before, and I don't think they were that strong, but they certainly were heavily weighted that way. Other board members with questions, comments?
I would just say getting out early in June, the other consideration is that the loss in student achievement comes over those long summer breaks, really, more than the two-week winter break. And so, the earlier we get out, more likely the longer a student is without school experience in June, July, and August. So, it cuts, as most things we do, it kind of cuts both ways, and I think these are difficult challenges to figure out. Yeah, and the only other comment was that we've done that survey informally before, just ask for comments, and I know our staff prefers the full two weeks. If there aren't any other comments, because we are voting on this tonight, or Ken, you've got another one?
Yeah, just one question, actually a statement, back to Nancy's first question. In that light blue in the text down there, if you can just put PD on there or something, so that parents will see it and say, "Oh, you just don't have a half-day off."
Will do.
Yeah, I think the notes we have from Parent Advisory Council said that, same thing we've heard the last couple of years, parents are glad that we have fewer late start and early release days. That was something we tried for a while, but the current philosophies, or the current response appears to be, "Don't do that, that's more complicated." So, for more effective PD and happier parents, we're going with more of the full days off. All right, we'll move on to the next agenda item, which is on the WMEP Fair Schools, and I will turn that over to Superintendent Metz and maybe chime in later.
And board members, I'm just going to speak from my chair here about the WMEP suggested changes at WMEP and a resolution that's going to come to you at the next meeting, and ask Julie to step in, because she is an expert on this topic and can help us. The real purpose tonight is to discuss a resolution to transfer the operation of the Fair Schools and the ownership of the buildings from WMEP to the Robinsdale District and the Minneapolis School District. And so, there's no decision tonight, but a time for discussion and a time for questions to be raised, and if we don't know the answers to the questions, we'll find them and get the answers back to you as soon as we can. At the next board meeting, February 9th, I'll be asking you to approve a resolution that is in your packet tonight, that would transfer the operation and the ownership of those buildings. Just as a little bit of background information, there are many districts that are part of WMEP, including Brooklyn Center, Columbia Heights, Eden Prairie, Edina, Hopkins, Minneapolis, Richfield, Robinsdale, St. Louis Park, St. Anthony New Brighton, and Wayzetta. And it's a great group. The superintendents from those districts have met quite a few times this fall, and we work well together, and look forward to working with those districts in the future. Right now, WMEP really has three main components from the superintendent's point of view. First, they operate the two schools. So, there's the Crystal School, which is grades four through eight, and there's the Downtown School, which is grades K through three and nine through 12. So, together, those two schools comprise a K-12 system. And WMEP, in the past, has had a superintendent, and they've run those two schools, much like any school district would run two schools. Another component of WMEP is teacher development. And WMEP has provided a great deal of professional development to teachers in the member districts, especially as it relates to closing the achievement gap. So, lots of teacher development, and they've done a very good job with that. And then the third component is student programming. They operate different programs for students within the member districts. The resolution has already been agreed to and signed by the superintendents. Every superintendent in the WMEP Collaborative has signed it. It's now going to the individual school boards of all the member districts, and we're asking, superintendents are asking their boards to approve it. Eventually, it's going to go to the WMEP Board for approval, and if it passes through those three levels, it'll go to the state legislature, because really the legislature is the, is the group that can change the ownership and operation of these schools. So, the legislature is the final step. I'm really looking at this as a win-win. The hope, and I'm expressing my point of view, but also the point of view of the member superintendents, is that this is something where everybody can win. The schools would continue to operate very much as they have been. Both Minneapolis and Robinsdale have committed to, in one case, four years, in another case, five years of continued operation of the schools, very much as they are today. We know that realistically, things change. Things change in our schools from year to year. But in general, the transition to be, those schools to be as similar next year as they are this year is the goal, and Robinsdale and Minneapolis have committed to that. So, that the students wouldn't lose, and that was the biggest concern of the districts, that the students who love going to the Fair School will continue to be able to do that, that for the most part, their teachers will still be there, their administrators will still be there, that from the inside, it won't look any different, except that someone else will be doing the operating. But having the ability to not run schools gives WMEP some opportunities. For example, instead of hiring another superintendent, they could hire a professional development leader that's committed to equity. They could expand their efforts in teacher development, which is a great interest of the superintendents. And in my dream world, WMEP would become a teacher development center, where teachers could go to get training, they could take night classes, for example, they could take summer courses with a heavy dose of equity. It could be the keeper of the research, sort of a think tank where the best ideas are stored and shared from district to district. And WMEP staff could come and visit schools during the day, and they could do site visits. They could help us by coaching and mentoring our staff while we're working. So, the concept is to take away the work of running schools and refocus, double down, so to speak, on the efforts of teacher development, which is really what all the districts are working hard to accomplish. So, that's the big picture of what this would take. In your board packet, you had a copy of the resolution, which you can read. And I want to take some time to let Julie add on to what I said, and/or for board members to ask questions, and we'll write those down and get as many answers back to you as we can.
Yeah, I will just add a few comments now. I've been the St. Louis Parks representative to the WMEP Board for the entire time that I've been on the St. Louis Park Board, which means I'm starting my 12th year there, as well as here in St. Louis Park. Just one clarification, we are not, this St. Louis Park Board is not required to pass this resolution in order for the transfer to happen. This is a supportive effort and request by the superintendents with which the board is generally quite aligned. Just a little background, WMEP started, or is, an integration district, and it started around 20 years ago when St. Louis Park, when Minneapolis looked a lot like St. Louis Park looks now. The demographics were fairly similar. St. Louis Park had maybe 12% kids of color. I don't know what the percent of free and reduced lunch, but I assume that was also much smaller at the time. And if you think of the other member districts that Rob mentioned, a lot of them had very few, much fewer kids of color or low-income students. So, they came together to do two broad categories, maybe consider it three. One was to do professional development and learning about equity and cultural competence, and some student programming related to that, and and cultural competence and some student programming related to that, and created these schools, two buildings that now operate really as one school. It's just K-12. But you go downtown for elementary or K-3 and 912, and then up to Crystal for 48. Originally, the schools were meant to be lab schools, and the thought was that teachers would rotate out of the building and bring back everything they learned to the member districts. Well, teachers didn't want to do that, and frankly, it wasn't good for kids to have that kind of mobility, and so that really never happened. Over the years that I've been on it, that Board has spent a lot of time trying to figure out how we could find other ways to share good things that happens at that school that would benefit all of the districts. But frankly, we haven't figured out how to do that. So we're running schools for about one percent of the total population of all eleven districts. Most recently, you know, at the same time, St. Louis Park has changed dramatically, as has every other district. Everybody's facing their own equity and integration challenges and want to be, and there's an increased interest in sharing our questions and answers and figuring out answers together across all the districts. More recently, we had some growing concern about finances, I should say, the schools. And we took some wise steps several years ago. The schools are funded only on tuition. But there's no opportunity to levy and those kinds of, for building repairs. And as the buildings get older, those become real concerns. And frankly, I find that a thousand-person, a thousand-student district is really too small to provide the curriculum support. With that tuition, we can't provide the kind of administrative support that even our district at forty-six-hundred students is able to provide. And I'm personally growing concerned about that. So our, we've discussed this off and on for six years, probably, five or six. And the, last fall, the Board came to the conclusion that we could best meet our member district needs for work on equity and integration by focusing on the kind of collaboration and professional development that, including some student programs that Rob mentioned, and not be spending their time on running schools for that one percent of our students. I think they've become very good schools for those students and their passionate defenses. Those of us who were on the Board when we redistrict, and those of you who experienced it as parents, you remember what you're concerned about is what's it going to be like for my kid tomorrow? And so the superintendents had been meeting and coming to the same conclusion. And the Board then decided if we could find a way to have the schools run essentially as they are now for the foreseeable future, about four or five years that he mentioned. And the districts, Minneapolis and Robinsdale, are talking about the same staff, same students, same program. That was going to be the best for both the students and our WMEP member districts. Under the state law, the two buildings were built by state bond. So the, and they put into the law that Robinsdale and Minneapolis have the right of first refusal if WMEP is giving up the building. So that's where we had to go. And they are both interested in running them under those terms we've talked about. Minneapolis is even talking about what they're calling community partnership schools, which is their new concept they're looking to implement for next year, having a couple of schools that are given a lot more independence and authority and the principal and staff there. We also have a role model in EMI-D, which hadn't done some of the tough decisions about financing a years ago. But they decided to stop operating their schools. And the legislature does have to approve ultimately the final conveyance. So that'll be the ultimate, ultimate step. But we believe that the schools can be operated in a way that is going to allow, you know, an eighth grader to go downtown if they want to and to graduate from that school, or a kindergartner to make it through the third grade that they would downtown to minimize the disruption. Who knows? It may continue beyond that. And then WMEP would be focused on the work that everybody's excited about. And we now have all superintendents excited about, and they haven't all been excited about being in WMEP in the past. But they're all excited about that potential, really working together in the ways that we've done. In some ways, we've reached out to Edina and Hopkins and doing that on a broader level and sharing what we know works and what hasn't worked, you know, and moving forward in our equity work together. So that's the background. The resolution is a way, this is a lot of chicken and egg kind of thing going back and forth, a way to sound out the member district boards. If we don't pass it, we may still go ahead and do this decision. If we do pass it, it's possible the WMEP Board will say no, but the general consensus has been, we want to do this. And that board meeting is two days after our next board meeting. So the timing will be important and an indication to WMEP of what St. Louis Park thinks. So questions or comments from anybody on the Board? Jim?
Just a question. I know you kind of touched on it, but we have a one-eleventh interest in those buildings, I guess, and there's some value there. But I guess, is that just offset because there'll be less maintenance costs then going forward? Or how has that been calculated? Or are we just giving up on that interest, or how do we get that return?
We don't have that interest. The state owns them. If we were to give them up and not WMEP, because they bonded for them. So any, if we were to just say, to just totally give them up, it would be the state, or if we were to sell them, it was the state who would get the proceeds. Otherwise, that's nice to think about. Yes, Ken?
So I'm thinking more in the future, after the five years, or even within that five-year plan. Would, currently, we get to send a certain amount of kids from St. Louis Park over there, and they're enjoying it. I know many of them, or some of them, and they enjoy it immensely. But that probably is not for the future for us? Or would it also have the opportunity for newcomers to go into this, the fair schools and thrive? Or is it just going to be Minneapolis and a MAP, or a magnet school for them?
It's a very good question. St. Louis Park has had, in the low forties, forty, forty-five kids at fair. The two buildings combined consistently for the last ten years or so. And what we're looking for and what Minneapolis and Robinsdale have been saying, we're waiting to get this in paper, and I expect to have it by the WMEP Board meeting, is first of all, any student there can stay. And that, second, because they are an integration school, that they would commit to allowing kids from our districts to still, new kids, to come and attend for this four- or five-year period of time. They think that's going to be required by the legislature in order for them to approve it, because they were built as integration schools. However, at some point, the legislature is reviewing some of the laws around that, and it's possible things could change in terms of the mandate. But that's what we're looking for from Minneapolis and Robinsdale, is still allowing some additional kids to attend. Now whether that goes, that's not going to be a promise into the indefinite future. That's going to be probably a set-term promise, but they have both said that so far.
Julie, wouldn't open enrollment still apply to those schools, though, even if there was no promise? Or am I missing something?
Open enrollment would apply. And in fact, there are a number of students, I don't remember if it's forty or more, like seventy, who attend from non-member districts, who started as a St. Louis Park resident, for example, and then moved to Oseo. And parents were still willing to drive them to the fair schools. So that does exist. At some point, that open enrollment will be challenging in the way that it's challenging for PSI for us, depending if they remain as popular within the districts. Right now, about half the kids there are Minneapolis kids. So if, and there've always been a lot of Minneapolis students on the waiting list. At some point in the far distant future, if they remain popular and they're no longer integration schools, then yes, it's open enrollment, but we'll see how they operate them. So, you know, there's an ending point at this to some point. We just don't know exactly now. But we're asking for four or five years of as things are now. Joe?
So currently, WMEP runs these schools, and you're saying basically as one entity, even though they're at the different locations, more or less?
Yeah, there's two principals, a principal at each school. We tried a shared principal and that didn't work so well. But K-12, they're one school in terms of K-12, and they're in aligned curriculum arts theme.
Okay, so going forward, and the two different school districts being in charge of the different grade levels, are there any concerns about that continuity being lost? Or are they basically just running the infrastructure, having the buildings, and they're running their own program?
There is that concern, and that's what we're waiting for answers on, too. They have said they would make the experiences as similar for the students as they could. But I personally have raised that question and said, you know, can we get, even though they're different districts, it's very possible for them to work together and coordinate and align. I think that's part of the reason for Minneapolis looking at this community partnership model, because that would make it even easier for the schools to connect in that way. So we're looking for that. That's apparent, definitely apparent concern. Are they going to become just two separate entities that happened to once have been affiliated? Or are they really going to try and align the curriculum? And I'm looking to see that in writing. Bruce?
Julie, are you aware of changes, similar-type changes in other districts? Buildings being turned over to other districts and with programs in them and how that has worked?
The EMI-D example is the best, and they had two schools. One ran through tenth grade, and I forget the grade configuration of the others. But they had two, one of which was located in the Roseville District and one of which was in South Washington's District. Roseville was very interested in the school. And it's Harambee and Crosswinds, and I forget which of the ones is in Roseville. But the one in Roseville transferred. Teachers have some rights to go back to their home district, but the teachers in the Roseville-based school all stayed. The students stayed. Roseville actually operated it for a year before the formal transition occurred. And the Roseville Superintendent has told our, the WMEP Superintendent Keith Lester, that there may well be parents who didn't realize that the management, the administration had changed because it went so smoothly. And the other one, however, South Washington County District did not want the school. It was eventually transferred to Purpatch because it also had an arts theme. That didn't go so well, lost a lot of students, lost a lot of staff, a lot of unhappy people that way. But the example in Roseville is one that, where the district wanted it and continues to operate it in that way. This is the, this is the first year where Roseville has owned it, the second year that they have administered it. And that one has gone fairly smoothly. Nancy?
Julie, I'm just looking at the resolution and the last paragraph of it, and it's, my question is almost the chicken and egg question. It sort of reads like we're asked to approve that WMEP cease to operate this fair school and work to transfer ownership, as opposed to conditioning the ceasing to operate on the ability to transfer ownership. If you see what I'm seeing as I read that resolution, and I'm just curious about if it needs to be reworded, or if I'm missing something in the chicken and egg dilemma, or if it doesn't really matter because we're just advisory on this.
Well, it does start out recommends it's going to take some time to transfer it and the building in Minneapolis to Minne- We're certainly, I'll say the superintendent's drafted it, so I didn't see it till afterwards. You certainly could play around with that. I mean, the alternatives, were Robinsdale and Minneapolis not interested? But they are. Let's just leave it at that. We certainly could change the wording. You're suggesting even just cease to operate the fair school and transfer ownership rather than just drop work, too?
Yes, that would solve it. I just don't want there to be a ceasing of operation and nobody picking up the ball and programming not continuing. And my understanding is the intent is that it be seamless or the soft landing, as I read in the paper? And that language just gave me some concern.
That's a good point, because that is why, that hesitation is why, part of why it hasn't come forward before and why we finally could come together around it, because we could find a way where we want the schools to still continue to operate. That is important for many of the board members, and that might be a friendly amendment that the superintendent, who's really bringing this forward, has already circled on his paper.
I mean, just a little further on that point, you could say where they agree to assume, you know, some sort of assumption of that obligation. And there is a signatory on the resolution where Robinsdale, Minneapolis will agree to assume the continued operations of the two schools.
That sounds good. Other questions or comments, concerns? Okay, this is a big decision. It's been percolating around for a long time, as I said, and I think Rob probably mentioned it long before Rob's time as superintendent anyways. And, you know, I think some of the parent concerns are being alleviated. Some are still there. Some are there because they weren't happy in their home districts, and so these are all questions. And I, we're working hard to try and alleviate them and get Minneapolis and Robinsdale as tied down to what they're committing to as possible. But the superintendents have been wonderfully supportive. I started to say that, thinking Robinsdale and Minneapolis, but actually, all of the superintendents from all the member districts have been integral part of this. Superintendents used to be part of the Board, they no longer are. And so this has been a nice conversation back and forth again over the last four to six months.
I would add, the superintendents really unanimously agreed with this for a variety of their own different reasons. But, and they joked about that, that it's probably one of the only things they've ever all agreed on, get that many superintendents together to agree. So they really have thought it through as much as they could and have come to this place. And I would also add, Julie and I were at a listening session. I was in the audience. Julie was on the stage listening to parents who, from the fair school, who came and spoke about their concerns. And I think the vast majority of their concerns had to do with the continued operation of the buildings. They didn't trust a hundred percent that the schools would continue to run as they are now. They're very happy with the schools. They love the integration part of it. They felt like their students had really gained a lot. They loved the artistic theme. They were pleased with the staff. They spoke highly of it. And they just wanted it to continue. And so I think Julie's point is a good one, that getting more details in writing from Minneapolis and Robinsdale, confirming what exactly would stay and what could change, is important for them to ease their concerns, because the member districts want the students to stay. We want the students who enjoy the schools to be there next fall. And the more information they have to put them at ease, the more likely they will stay.
So if there are any more questions or comments, it'll be on our action agenda next time. And I'll move us on to the next item, which is the strategic plan update.
Good evening, board members. I'm going to speak briefly to the strategic plan. It's coming soon. It's very exciting for me to be part of the next strategic plan. And the first point that I'd like to make is this is really a continuation of our current plan. We've had a five-year strategic plan. That plan ran out-
We've had a five-year strategic plan, that plan ran out last spring. And we are going to, first of all, just affirm our mission and beliefs. We're not going to begin by writing a whole new mission and belief statement. We're going to keep our current mission and belief statement, going to affirm that. We're going to take stock on all the good things that happened in the last five years. And there were many things in the former strategic plan that were accomplished, so we'll take stock on that and we'll celebrate all the good things that happened. And then we'll sit down and chart out a course for the next five years, which is really exciting. St. Louis Park, the community in St. Louis Park, the school district are in a really good place right now. Our financial situation is good, our enrollment is climbing steadily, we have very committed parents, we have a tremendous staff, and I am really excited to be part of this process to chart out the next five years. I put a schedule on the board, sounded like a teacher there, on the board, on the Elmo. And the first step has actually already occurred, or is going to be occurring this week, I put January 19th. But training internally here for our staff, we're going to be working with the experts from our facilitators, Transformation Systems, on Thursday of this week, and getting some background information of everything we have to do to get prepared for this process. Then on February 24th will be our three World Cafes. World Cafes are really giving the entire community an opportunity to come forward and give us their input on where they would like us to be five years from today. And we're planning a World Cafe both early in the morning for the early risers, one at midday, and then one into the evening. So everybody in St. Louis Park will get an opportunity to come forward and be part of this process. We'll be publicizing those meetings very soon. We're just working on the venues, and as soon as we have those locked down, we'll do some publicity around the World Cafes. Then we'll put a core planning team together. The core team will have thirty members, and they will meet for two long days, April 8th and April 9th. Those days are going to be starting in the morning and going into the evening, two days in a row, so it's going to be grueling, but it's going to be hopefully exciting. And the core team is going to help us identify three to five key strategies, as they're called, the three to five key things that we want to accomplish in the next five days, or five years. Then we'll create an action team for each of those strategies. And the action teams are going to meet five times. And the job of the action team is to do the step-by-step, block-by-block, brick-by-brick building, what is it going to take to accomplish the strategy over the course of the next five years. The action teams are going to meet three times in April and May, and then the core team will come back on May 28th for another meeting. And at that meeting, they'll get an update from the action teams on what they've accomplished in their first three meetings. Then the action teams will meet again two more times, and they'll come back to the core team and present their final work. And then finally, on June 22nd, the planning committee from the strategic plan will come to the board and present for your consideration their ideas. So it's going to be very intense from April 8th to June 22nd, but a lot of good work with the goal of really taking, taking us from a very good place right now to an even better place five years from now. So tonight, I just wanted to take a few moments to show you the timeline and answer any questions you might have. At this time, you can expect quite a bit of feedback along the way, and we'll give you regular updates, both at board meetings and in my writings to you with how it's going. And should be, should be an important and exciting time. Do you have any questions right now?
Okay, Jim?
Rob, just a couple of things. One, you didn't talk at all about measurements. You know, last time we had different teams, we had a core team. And are there plans to create new measurement tools, or does that come later in the process? Or what are your thoughts on that?
Yeah, we're going to do it a little bit differently. There won't be measurement teams this time, but there'll be a measurement component to each action team. So there will be a measurement component.
And the other thing, maybe you could just say a word or two about Susan Hints, who's going to lead the effort?
Yes, so our facilitator, Transformation Systems, the lead facilitator is Susan Hints. She's a former superintendent from Oseo. I've had many conversations with her already, even this morning, and I've been very impressed. She knows St. Louis Park pretty well, and she knows a lot of the people that work here. There's a lot of Oseo-St. Louis Park connections. I think it's because of the Orioles and the Orioles, I'm not sure. So it's a good, I have a really good feeling and a lot of respect for her already, so I'm really looking forward to working with her.
Joe?
Superintendent Metz is a great ambassador for the school district and is a great salesman. In this case, calling the core planning team grueling was probably not the best sales job. As a former member of the core planning team, so for this last go-around, it actually is grueling, that is truthful, but it is also very rewarding. You go through the entire day, that long day, as you described, but to be part of that group of thirty people that at the beginning of the day was not on the same page, and then by the end of the day, the end of the session, is totally on the same page, agreeing to the same words, it's very powerful. It is grueling, but it is very powerful and is a very rewarding experience.
True. Bruce?
True. And I would just add to that, that the way we've done it, operating by consensus, this district took a huge risk to attempt to do that. I mean, there aren't many places that operate by consensus, and I think everybody who was on that committee would say, wow, that was a heck of an experience.
Any other questions? Nancy?
Just to process one first, are the core team members and the action team members, do you anticipate any overlap in that membership, or are they totally separate?
I don't know the answer to that. I'll be, I'll know that better by the end of this week after we meet with Transformation Systems.
Just curious. And then my second piece on that is these are really helpful to have educators and the community members weighing in on their enthusiasm and excitement for the school district and what they would like to see, but they're also advisory to you and to the board. And so I think it's, it's really important that we may, maybe you and the chair, talk about and make sure we get some planned updates, because I would hate to get down the line, down the road and find that for some odd reason, the board is on a different page than our advisory team when they put all the work in. So it would be good to, especially the initial strategies that are identified, I would think we'd want to make sure we're on the same page there.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, I think we would want an update after that first two-day meeting, when they come up with the strategies. My recollection is there was some overlap with the action teams, but they certainly brought in new people to, maybe none? Yeah, I know they brought in new people. Ken?
So I was wondering if you've identified what the core teams would be for the majority of it, or any of it?
The members of the core team have not been identified yet. We've committed to having the demographic breakdown of the core team match the demographic breakdown of our students, and that's one commitment we've made. But other than that, we don't, we haven't selected the core team yet, and we're still going through different ways of doing that and trying to make a decision on that.
And I just want to echo Joe's comment. The last time around, I believe Bruce and I were the board representatives, but Karen, Joe, and Ken were on as parents, community members, and I think you said it exactly. It was a long night, and I think Bruce has often told the story where at, you know, Friday, late at night, I went home thinking, we'll never agree. And by Saturday at noon or one, we were in consensus. So it really was a rewarding experience to go through that and to be in the other core planning team meetings, too. And since I've mentioned three members of the board who participated as parents or community members, who knows, you might get recruited to run for school board if you join this core team. Are you open to people, is there going to be a sort of recruitment process?
Again, yet to be determined, but more than likely, at the World Cafes will be a great time to reach out to people, because we'll be having large groups of community members coming then, and online, of course. So we haven't worked out the details, but we'll find a way to reach out.
And board members, we want to have two participating again. Karen has volunteered, Ken is checking on things and thinks he can, but if he can't, we may be checking with the rest of us, too, for a second board member. Any other questions or comments?
I'll work on my wording of grueling. I think Susan Hints really convinced me to make sure that people who commit know what they're committing to and are there heart and soul for St. Louis Park. So I'll look for a synonym that's a little better.
Well, we're not disagreeing with grueling, we just added rewarding.
Thank you very much.
All right, next on the agenda is the consent agenda. And by rule, we don't take any discussion on the consent agenda, so if there's any motion to approve it, this will be the time. Second?
Second.
All in favor, please say aye. Aye? Anyone opposed? Motion carries seven zero. The first item on the action agenda is approval of the school 2015-16 school calendar, and it's recommended that the school board approve the 2015-16 school calendar as presented. Is there a motion? Motion by Ken, second by Bruce. Any further discussion? All right, all in favor of the motion, please say aye. Aye? Anybody opposed? Motion carries seven zero, and we'll look forward to the discussion of the next year's calendar. The second action item is approval of this City of St. Louis Park Parks and Recreation Commission appointment. It's recommended the school board approve the appointment of Peter May as the school board-appointed member to the City of St. Louis Park Parks and Recreation Commission for a term expiring December 31st, 2017. Is there a motion? So moved. Second?
Second.
And second by Ken. I'll say, as the first part of the discussion, that Karen, Ken, and I met with Mr. May, Peter May, prior to this meeting, had a good discussion, learned a lot about bicycling and safety, and came up with ideas for him to suggest with Parks and Recreation on safe biking. He is a bicyclist. But Mr. May is a thirty-plus-year resident of St. Louis Park, had kids that went through our schools, been very involved in a lot of volunteer activities, found a number of school committees that he had participated on over the years, and so we were very satisfied with his qualifications. Any other discussion?
I just really appreciated that he cares enough about our community to continue to advocate for the kids, and he'll bring some expertise that will really be a benefit. So I'm, so thank you, Peter.
All in favor of the motion, please say aye. Aye? Anyone opposed? Motion carries seven zero, and Mr. May will be appointed. Next, the last item is communications and transmittals. Does anybody have something? Karen?
So I do like to talk about the children-first assets, and asset 33, interpersonal competence. And this one is a really good one from Principal Meyer's blog. The Quiz Bowl qualified for the state tournament by finishing third place in the Western Division with a 9-3 record. This team includes Spencer Anderson, Peter Johnson, David Hope, and Elliot Schwartz. Nick Kasich also played on the team for one round. Elliot Schwartz had the second highest total of correct answers in the West Division. So this totally shows teamwork and critical thinking skills and definitely interpersonal competence. Similar, but I don't have any names of the kids who participated, the first Microsoft Youth Spark Live Technology Conference was held in the United States, and a group of our students were one of three teams chosen to compete in the final round of a Shark Tank-style competition. They had to create a new technological product and pitch it. They created a prototype of an app called Fast Doc, Your Personal Virtual Doctor. Our students won the competition and were awarded gift certificates to Best Buy. We are really proud of our terrific, smart, creative students. Thanks so much.
Yeah, those are fun ones. Other communications or transmittals? Ken?
So this weekend, the Saturday, the 31st of January, I do believe, is the annual Aquila B Pancake Breakfast, so invite everybody to come out to Aquila from eight o'clock till noon, I do believe, and it's going to be serving pancakes and sausages. So come in.
Are you cooking?
I will be there from 6:30 till, or six o'clock till probably one, cooking, yes. And I think you guys all will get an invitation.
So Ken, that means this Saturday would mean January 31st, from eight to noon at Aquila?
Correct.
Sounds good. She's cautious about the fact that this won afterwards, and we don't want people showing up on the wrong Saturday.
They'll be at your door.
I just want to mention, and the Sun Sailor had Reader's Choice Awards, the Sun Media Reader's Choice Awards last week, and St. Louis Park had a nice ad, it's our ad, but notifying the two people, the person and the school that had won, Corey Maslowski from Park Spanish Immersion was chosen best principal, and the high school was the best high school. I think we could have had five other schools and five other principals that would have won and done, been equally worthy, but I think it's nice when our schools and staff are recognized in any way. And we should mention again Tom Marvel being recognized today for the support of one of his staff members and aligning with his military service. So we appreciate your work, Tom, as well. And if there's nothing else, then I would take a motion to, yes, a motion to adjourn. Moved by Bruce, second by Nancy. All in favor of adjourn, of the motion, please say aye. Aye? Anybody opposed? Motion carries, and we are adjourned at 8:12.